Good evening, everyone. Today's November 3rd, and we're going to call a public hearing of the zoning board of appeals to order. There is a mask mandate in City Hall, so please make sure you wear your mask, although you can't take it off when you're speaking, so we can hear you. Please put your cellphones on vibrate. And we'll start by saying, Mr., the first petition, Mr. Ticky is sitting up here, but he was not here for that petition. I reviewed it myself, so only four of us are available to vote on the first petition. Huh? Yeah, you're supposed to have five, there'll only be four people voting. As you know, you need four votes to pass. Yeah, you need four to pass, so. All right, with that said, ask Ms. Streets to read the first one, Barnum Avenue Cut Off, which is left over from the previous meeting. It's still open for the public portion.
Good evening, everyone. 725, 735, 771 Barnum Avenue Cut Off, petition of M A R L Properties LLC, C and B Group LLC, and B A C O 725 LLC, seeking a site plan review and variances of Section 10.2.1.2 to erect six additional self-storage buildings on the properties that customers can directly access themselves, in conjunction with the previously approved 10193 square, 193 square foot self-storage building, buildings located on 735 Barnum Avenue Cut Off, which are all located in an M A zone. Hardship, the strict application of the regulations would cause exceptional difficulty and unusual hardship unnecessary to the general purpose of the zoning regulations, and will deprive the applicants of the reasonable use of the properties.
Just state your name.
Evening, Mr. Chairman. My name is John Nuff, K N U F F. My address is 147 Broad Street in Milford, Connecticut, and I'm here tonight on behalf of the three applicants. The commission may be aware that, I'm sure you'll recall, when we were here last before you, that there was a topic that I think we all agreed was irrelevant, but we're happy to look into, which is whether or not we've gotten approval from the town's flood control authority. And so I have submitted to Dan a couple days ago, and I just provided hard copies to each of you, an email from John Casey, your town engineer, and this is an email exchange with our engineer's colleague, Chris Cardney, in which case, John Casey, the town engineer, says, "Hi, Chris. I reviewed this issue with the floodplain administrator, Brian Donovan, who is the building official, and we agree that this area is within tightly influenced portion of Longbrook, and therefore no compensatory storage is required at the above referenced property for the town flood control ordinance. The flood elevation would therefore be still water elevation of 9.6, as shown in the transect and the Longbrook flood profile." I'm sort of hesitant to go much further, because this obviously is a variance application with regard to the interpretation of your regulations and the unique characteristics of this property, but nonetheless, to put people's minds at ease, our professional engineer, Brian Phillips, also prepared the attachment memorandum, where he indicates that we are reducing the peak flows during a number of different storm events. I know that, you know, planning and zoning commission members often get into the details of stormwater control and the MS4 requirements and such, and that zoning boards of appeal rarely get involved in those sorts of things, and for good reason. You know, be happy to answer your questions, but the hearing was left open for that specific purpose.
At the very back of the storage property is a huge drainage pipe. And at the end of this drainage pipe is what looks like a big rubber cork, except it's shaped like this.
Okay.
What is that?
I don't know. Perhaps Brian could shed some light on that for us.
Brian Phillips, P H I L L I P S with Langin. I'm sorry, I couldn't quite hear. You said it was a rubber tire, or?
No, it's basically something that looks like it's stopping the water from going into that pipe, which...
I have not been on site, but I believe that's a tide gate.
A tide gate.
So it checks the flow of water through that pipe.
In or out both ways? I'm not sure about it, too.
Out.
Okay, thank you.
Anyone else? Commissioner Young?
Thank you. In case you didn't hear, Attorney Nuff, we're allowed to take off our masks when speaking. I know that question came up last time.
That's fine.
So you've mentioned that your engineer and the town's engineer have compared notes regarding what the base flood elevation is.
Yes.
Could you, again, say into the record what the proposed elevation will be in relationship to the required elevation?
Sure.
Thank you.
As specified by the town engineer, 9.6. All of our units are at 9.7, above the base flood elevation.
9.7, if I heard you correctly?
Correct.
So obviously, you're a professional engineer, but to remind you, if you weren't here, or to tell you if you weren't here, at the last hearing, we heard a lot of testimony from property owners who have resided there, or business owners who have resided there for a while, who would tell you that base flood elevations are good to know about, but the reality of storm events is something else altogether, and 9.7 may not protect your interests. Frequently, you hear about people doing freeboard or elevating higher than necessary to give themselves some added assurance. Not a condition or anything, just putting that on the record to be aware of the testimony we heard, that storms do happen, excuse me, and floods do occur, and there's been damage from flooding events that those property owners told us about. I have a question for Attorney Nuff.
Yep.
Attorney Nuff, I realize it's been only a month, however, I could use a refresher, if you're willing. You'll recall, we talked about the architectural review board and a variety of statements made at their meeting.
Yep.
And recommendations they offered, although it was not a majority opinion. You methodically went through your responses to those recommendations, and should the board this evening decide to approve it, they may want to include conditions consistent with what you have offered. Could you remind us? Here comes the question. What did you offer, should that become a condition?
Sure. Let me find the A or B memo, sorry. Oh, no, it's actually in Dan's memo as well. Upgrade the chain link fence with a metal rung fence. Colors of the building should be muted. You know, we had shown you cut sheets that were sort of blue, but you know, we had agreed, those are always for the dimensions, so the actual colors of the building would be beige and green. Clean up of the front two parcels as much as possible. Add landscaping where possible, and to hide the dumpsters. And certainly, whether you made that, whether you've made those conditions of approval or not, we will do those, because, you know, we have assured that, we assured the architectural review board that we would do that. So we're happy to include those as conditions of approval, but even if you didn't, we will do those.
Thank you. If I have, may I ask a question of Mr. Brennan? Once again, forgive me if I asked this last time, but could you remind me, once this hearing is over and a decision rendered, what are the next steps for the applicant? What other boards, if any, do they have to appear in front of? And who else is, will be reviewing this, to make sure the concerns we heard raised by neighbors will be addressed? Thank you.
The applicant will have to go to the zoning commission next, for a modification of the site, of the original site plan approval.
And am I correct, that part and parcel of review by the zoning commission and eventual permits by the town includes, one more time, review by the engineering department to determine that drainage will be adequately addressed, stormwater management will be satisfied, so the neighbors might have some peace of mind that they will not be receiving additional stormwater runoff?
Yes, that is correct. All departments will have another opportunity to review the application.
Thank you. And one last question, Attorney Nuff, thank you. You did hear the chairman identify, only four members are sitting tonight, and four affirmative votes are needed, and it appears you are prepared to proceed?
We're prepared to. Obviously, we're testifying before the board. I would ask, however, given the fact that there are only four, if anyone has any concerns, you know, with regard to our application, we'd love to hear that. I mean, I would ask that under any circumstance, frankly, but particularly when we have little, I mean frankly, no margin for error of any kind, so.
But once we close the public portion, it goes to administrative session.
No, no, no.
Then you can't, and that's the only way you'll find out. So if you wanted to wait, we could close the public portion, when it goes to administrative table until December 7th, when there'll be five people here.
No, no, no. Understood. All I'm asking is, and I would ask this under any circumstance, because oftentimes, you make a presentation, and a commission member will have a question, or you know, sort of in the back of his or her mind, that you don't really hear until the deliberations. And I always ask commission members, under any circumstance, whether Z B A, P N Z, or WELDLENS, that they share with us any concerns or questions before you close the hearing.
Any other commissioners have any concerns they'd like to address? Go ahead, Ms. Clary.
You'll have to do a lot of filling to put those boxes in, correct?
Filling? Brian?
I wouldn't use the word a lot, but there will be some filling. The current elevation of the site in the back there is between elevation eight and a half and nine and a half, and we're bringing the units up to 9.7. The spaces between them will be lower than 9.7, but the fills are on the order of magnitude, you know, six inches to 18 inches at most, in the, in the rear section of the site.
Okay, I'm not experienced at it, but it looked like it was a lot more than that. Will that, in effect, cause even more water to come in to the carpenter's property?
Well, in addition to meeting all the regulations as far as, you know, flood zone and keeping everything above, we are providing a stormwater detention pond in the rear of the site, which will offer, I believe it's 3,500 cubic feet, which would be included as storage. There was also compensatory storage provided on the adjacent parcel, 771, which is also providing additional storage within the floodplain.
Okay, that's the retention pool that's already there?
We are proposing one under our application, in order to meet the stormwater requirements and exceed the stormwater requirements of the town of Stratford. We are providing a approximately 3,500 cubic foot stormwater detention pond.
So a new one on your property?
Correct.
Thank you.
Attorney Nuff, before the engineer leaves, if the chairman will allow me, I have a follow-up question, related to Ms. Clary's question. If we could bring the engineer back?
Sure.
Yeah, I know.
We heard Ms. Clary inquire about how much fill will be imported to the site, and I believe you identified that the grade will be raised in the neighborhood of 18 to 24 inches.
No, six inches to 18 inches.
Six inches to 18 inches, thank you. How much cubic yards of fill will be brought to the site to make that happen, if you know?
I do not have that exact value off the top of my head.
I thought perhaps it was on the plans, and maybe I had missed it.
No, I don't, I don't believe it is, but it, I wouldn't say it's a significant fill site.
Over 1,000 cubic yards, under 1,000, estimate?
I can't make an estimate off the top of my head, but I would say, I would say beneath that, but again, you know, I don't have that exact number.
Thank you.
For the engineer again, thank you. I did go look at the property, and from the recent rain rehad, it was very obvious that the water from the road came down in front and went into the adjacent lower property. Is there something that can be done upward, to maybe detour it a different way? Is that something that would be possible?
Which property?
The carpenter's property.
So this is, we're talking about from the self-storage building that has been built?
The lower property. Yes, if you're facing the building to the right.
Yeah.
It's obvious that a lot of, you know, the water's coming down that way. It's, and I believe that's what the complaint was.
So obviously, that 771 is part of the application, but, you know, where we're actually proposing to put these self-storage units or smaller buildings around the other two parcels. I don't, I don't think that we have the right to drain onto another property.
Not even your own? I mean, not even that property? Because up at the very top, some of it could be diverted, I don't know.
The property that you're speaking of is, is, was approved, went through the approval process, and is finished built. We're not proposing any construction on that parcel.
Okay, I'm just trying to look for...
No, no, I understand, and we appreciate your concern. However, I'm reluctant to repeat this, but that issue isn't before this commission. The issue of drainage on frankly, any of the parcels is not before the commission, particularly not that one, where it has already been through the whole process, before the, before the zoning commission and the zoning commission several years ago. I mean candidly, when 771 was built, existing self-storage facility, the work that my client did improved the flooding situation, because he provided compensatory storage on that property. So actually, he made the commission better than was existing prior to.
Okay, now, I can understand the veterinary hospital. What you had built has nothing to do with its water problems, but I just still think of the fairness of more water put down on that lower property, and it's just, that's what was addressed here, and I understand it's not part of it. Does the law need to be fair?
No.
It's a flood zone, it's going to flood anyway, I mean...
Again, I appreciate the concern that you voiced. I think in your effort to be fair, you need to look at this application, and whether or not you need the definition of a hardship. I think you've demonstrated that. I think Dan has indicated that we're not done with the town, that, you know, we will have to continue this effort, you know, the town engineering staff, and to demonstrate that we comply with all stormwater requirements and your flood certification process. So, I mean, I think you can rest assured that you have a very diligent town staff, and that we will be complying with everything that they require us to do.
Thank you very much.
Any further questions by commissioners?
Chris Doolan, I guess I'm just wondering, I know you're going to be above the flood zone, but in the event, when the storm does happen, like you don't know what are in those storage containers, so there is the potential for contamination going into the water systems. And I just wonder, you know, why the necessity for so many storage containers, if the numbers could be reduced.
Well, I think, I think simply it's supply and demand, and that there is a demand for this. Mark, I don't know if you want to address how you, how you regulate, you know, the materials that can be stored in those, in those containers.
Yeah, no, no... Mark Builder, Mark Properties, yeah, no hazardous materials are permitted within the units of any kind.
I'm sorry, I can't hear you.
No hazardous materials are permitted in the units, and typically, these are, most of the units basically have household goods in them, primarily.
But it could be, I don't know, you know, lawn mowers, what do you call it, snow blowers? And they do have oil, gasoline, et cetera, in them.
Yeah. Now, if it's situations that contain that you're not supposed to have any extra, you know...
Gas cans.
Gas cans, things like that.
But you're not monitoring that, because these are accessed by themselves.
There are cameras, and there are people who do walk, but if, can somebody slip something through? It's possible, but we don't, we don't typically have an issue with that.
But again, I, to reiterate myself, this application, as well as the one of 771, both were approved by the WELDLEN Commission, in fact, very heartily sought, because of all the cleanup that Mark has been doing on these properties. So the WELDLEN Commission, your town engineer, has not voiced any concern with regard to any, any materials that are going to be stored in those, in those containers or those buildings, you know, somehow getting into the, the water supply.
I do have those concerns, that's all.
Understood.
Any other commissioners with questions? Hearing done, you still want to proceed with four votes, with four people?
Can you give me one minute?
Sure.
I think out of caution, Mr. Chairman, we would respectfully ask that you can close the hearing, but that you vote next week, or next month.
Oh, so yeah, so we can table the administrative session until next month?
Yes, please.
Okay. Anyone here wish to speak in favor of the petition? Anyone wish to speak in favor? Anyone in opposition? Just state your name and address for the record, please.
Thank you. Justin Rehm, last name R E H M. We're the property located at 825 Barnum Ave Cut Off, the lower property with all the water problems right now. I appreciate you taking the time to come see, see what is going on there, and, once again, I need to say that we're not against the development here, at all. In 2017, we came here and addressed our concerns about changing the landscape of Barnum Ave Cut Off, and making sure that we weren't going to have a water issue. This is not a flood issue. We understand floods happen. This is a, our neighbors diverted 100% of the runoff to our building, and did not do what they said they were going to do, which was addressed within this committee. So, we're here. I did prepare something to read, which I will. I'm hoping we can find some sort of solution, and you guys can move forward with your development, how you see fit, just making sure that we mark a couple check boxes off. That being said, before I go further, I'd like to make note of a few things. First off, I've tried to contact Mr. Builder via phone and text many times since our last meeting. He refuses to return any correspondence, similar to how his representatives handled our inquiries throughout the entire building process of the storage facility. And again, I understand this hearing has nothing to do with the storage facility that is existing right now, but you guys are once again going to be changing the landscaping, the landscape, and also the traffic flow, and I think there's a few things that do need to be addressed. If you were down there today, I think you saw the entrance scenario we have as well. Additionally, Mr. Builder's response to this committee was completely false last month. At no point in time did we ever demand free pavement or other improvements to our property, period. We did, however, request information on how the water runoff promised in front of this very committee was going to be diverted to the rear of the property, to the retention pond, promises that were made to you and promises that were not kept. Our goal, once again, was to work together and make sure that all water diverted towards our building would have clear passage to the desired endpoint, put together in the plan, promised by his engineer that night at the meeting in 2017. Had Mr. Builder returned one single call, or spent five minutes into discussion, he would have been informed correctly that we were simply trying to avoid the current situation, which we're in right now, wasting our time with, and at that point, we were open to covering costs to have any other areas concerned on our end as well, because we've got this new building, which is a good-looking building, it serves its purpose, why not clean up the whole area at once? You've changed the sidewalks, you cut our driveway, you utilized our driveway. The cut down the middle of the driveway could be cleaner, the cut at the end could be cleaner. It was just complete disregard for us throughout the entire process. After over 40 years in the same building, we now have water, not floodwater, but rainwater coming right through the foundation, because of the amount of excess water forced against our building, because no provisions promised by Mr. Builder and his team came to fruition, and we tried many times. Not only did we have significant flood loss, we've lost the use of our parking lot anytime there's any sort of precipitation, and now we're dealing with a constant leak that has twice ruined projects on the manufacturing floor and thousands of dollars in inventory. We were told by his people to dig up our driveway and waterproof the foundation on our dollar, now that his portion of the project is complete. I need to remind everyone that the day of paving, the construction company, the guys on the machines, said, "We were told to divert the water this direction." They agreed it was the wrong thing to do, but they were there, the asphalt was there, and they were told to divert the water that direction to the retention pond. What we were asking for, not was the, not the entire parking lot, okay, not, not gold-plated siding on the side of our building, but if you're going to divert all that water, just pave it so the water can flow. I would reiterate again, again, we are not against the development. We are, however, against liars. I could promise that if I, if we were to switch positions and it were Mr. Builder's storage units getting flooded out due to a new development next door, he would not be sitting back and accepting the failure to execute a simple request that was agreed upon in these very chambers. I can also guarantee that if any of you had a new home put up next to yours, and the builder intentionally graded the property to divert all water towards your home, causing your basement to flood every time it rained, you would be just as disgusted as we are. Additionally, I need to go back to the curb cut, because I've personally been inches from getting hit multiple times since our last meeting. Where I understand, again, this is about storage facility in the rear of the property, we're talking about the entrance right now. I believe you saw how tight it is to the building. Last week, I was trying to leave at the stoplight, somebody came in with a trailer, because they were loading up one of the storage units, I assume. He couldn't pull in, he was stuck on Barnum Ave Cut Off. I was exactly where I needed to be, waiting for the stoplight, and he had to stop traffic because the trailer was stuck in the middle of the post road. It's, it's silly. There's just not enough room for any car to safely exit the driveway while tenants of Mr. Builders use our property to access his building. I believe during the first meeting, you were told it would be single digits regarding the amount of people in and out the driveway per day. This is very far off. I'm sure the answer is going to be it's just while people are moving in, however, it is a safety concern, it needs to be rectified. The answer of the state-approved it is nonsense. Someone will get hurt, and it's going to fall back, and everybody will let this happen. Lastly, we've had issues with tenants of the storage unit using our dumpster for random items as they are unloading their trailers and trucks. We have a small dumpster with weekly pickup for our needs. We manufacture custom cabinetry, drop-offs, inventory, so on and so forth, but it's for our needs. We cannot operate with nowhere to discard of our trash anywhere for, for all of our manufacturing. I tried to bring it to the manager on duty's attention last week, he told me it wasn't their problem, call the police. So you've got all these people coming in, it was supposed to be a small amount, I have a dumpster on our property, and I get it, anybody could drive by, see a dumpster, and fill it up, but not, hey, let's talk about this, not, maybe we should put up a fence so people can't see it, not, let me put up a sign, call the police. Bother Stratford. We let Mr. Builder use our land for cranes, for parking, for dump trucks, and other heavy machinery throughout this entire process. We haven't caused problems until we were bullied to this point. We would like to request the approval of Mr. Builder's new project, contingent upon restoring our property to its condition prior to the initial construction, including a detailed plan on how the water situation will be rectified, not floodwater. That might change with the new buildings in the back, we know that. I'm talking about the rainwater. There was supposed to be a swale, it was supposed to be paved, so the water had somewhere to go in the center and hit its desired endpoint, not against our building, and not flooding out our back parking lot every time it rains. How the safety hazards, the current entrance will be addressed. There will be an accident. People have driven onto our building, you have cameras, I'm sure you could see that. I promise you, there will be an accident right there. There's not enough room, I don't care if you're driving a Mini Cooper, you could drive a matchbox car, you are going to get hit. How he plans to address the tenants filling up our dumpster each week, because with your new development, you're going to have more traffic down there, and how he plans to correct the erosion that's already happened, including but not limited to the water and sewer line that is now fully exposed in the parking lot due to water runoff. There's a, probably a 24-inch or so concrete drainage pipe that is 100% exposed right now, because everything's washed away, sure you saw it today. You can't miss it, it's pretty big. Most of these things were addressed in the initial meeting in 2017. In these chambers, we were told they would be addressed during construction, they were not. We hope this time, our hardships are taken into consideration and not overlooked. We cannot be told it's a civil matter, and it's up to us to hire legal representation again. These scenarios are creating substantial safety concerns for the public, as well as hindering our ability to operate our own business safely and efficiently. So, I think I've said all I need to say, this stuff is, is pretty clear. I'm hoping we can address some of these concerns before something... I'm hoping we can address some of these concerns before something happens and someone gets hurt, and you can move forward with your project. But I, I think everything on here is very elementary, and i- if you took a ride by and you saw what was going on, I think you guys could certainly agree that these are not, uh, these are not just nuisance problems, these are real problems. Thank you for your time.
Any other person speaking in opposition? Does the petitioner wish to respond? No?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Listen, I, I don't think, we know that the DOT approved the driveways. My client has his own curb cut onto Barnum Ave. Cut-off. Nonetheless, in the interest of trying to put these, these issues to bed, and I know that I keep on repeating that these are irrelevant to what's before you, but we're all human beings and it's sort of hard to put those things aside, why don't we keep the hearing open? Let us address each of these in a very specific fashion, in a very concise fashion, you know, with topography, with plans, with frankly, things that we haven't submitted to this commission, because, you know, drainage is not something we typically get into bef- before the zoning board of appeals. So, um, so instead of, you know, closing the hearing and putting this off to executive session, um, or administrative discussion next month, let's keep the hearing open, we'll come back, we'll address everything, and maybe have a discussion with the neighbor, if that's okay with the commission.
Just to clarify for the record, because there's only four people that can sit on this petition, the petitioner does have the option not to go forward if there's not five. So we'll table the petition, we'll leave it open, and you can come back on December 7th, and you can come back on December 7th.
Okay, Trump, thank you.
Thank you. I'll entertain a motion then to table this petition?
Mr. Chairman, uh, if I may, the attorney enough wanted to get all the issues out on the table. Can I add one more for him to come back with when he returns?
Sure, yep, go ahead.
Attorney enough, I think it would be helpful to me if you could return in December once again, itemizing, to your point, you know, why we, why you are here and what relief you are seeking. If I understood correctly, at our first hearing, you are seeking a use variance, uh, that the zoning regulations allow principal buildings providing for storage facilities, and what you are seeking are accessory buildings for storage use. And it would be useful for me to, once again, hear, under what authority you think the ZBA can grant such a request. As I think you recall, I was suggesting, isn't that a text amendment before the zoning commission, not a use variance in front of this commission? Thank you.
Just to make it clear too, next month, we will have to act on this petition, because the clock will be running out.
Understood.
So, one way or the other, we have to act on the 7th, okay? Now I'll entertain a motion to table this and leave the public portion open. Motion by Commissioner Young. Saying goodbye Commissioner Streets. All in favor, seeing if anybody's saying aye? Opposed? Let the record show that Mr. Tiki did not vote. Thank you. Commissioner Young, if you'd read the first one into the record, please?
Mary Young for the record, 170 Orin Oak Lane, Petition of Unique Way Inc., seeking to appeal the planning and zoning administrators' denial to issue a building permit for 11 single-family homes in RS-1 Zone.
Yes, I'm Attorney Stephen Bellis at the Pellegrino Law Firm, and I represent the applicant and property owner Bluebird Prestige Inc., and they own the property at 170 Orin Oak Road. Would you like me to proceed? Oh, okay. Whatever you prefer. If you can't hear me, please just yell and I'll, I'll try to enunciate. So, let me start by saying that we're here before you, um, because I brought a mandamus action, um, trying to get a building permit for 11 units on this property. And the judge, um, said that, since the Planning and Zoning Commission had voted not to extend, uh, uh, an application, that we should come to you first before he, before he can rule, because you have the power, as a ZBA, uh, to overrule the Planning and Zoning Commission. So that's why, that's what I'm asking you to do here. And, um, it has a bit of a complicated, uh, history to it, but I'll, I'll try to simplify it, um, and explain why I think the Planning and Zoning Commission just simply made a mistake. So way back when, in 2012, believe it or not, um, uh, the property owner at that time got an approval from the Planning and Zoning Commission for 11-unit condominiums, and at the time, they were age-restricted. And, um, uh, the, the Planning and Zoning Commission in Stratford at, at the time, had a very funny policy. Uh, they said you had to file final plans after you got your approval. They've, they've done away with that, because it really doesn't make any sense. But, um, so we filed an applica- an extension, uh, to do the final plans. And then in 2013, the, uh, same property owner came in with a second application. It was the same thing, 11 units, condominiums, everything was the same, except these were not age-restricted. And that was also approved by the Planning and Zoning Commission. So, um, at that time, uh, in 2013, the, um... A special, they call it in, uh, in, in Stratford, a special exception. So the special exception that I was telling you about for the 11 units that are not age-restricted, um, was recorded on the land records, uh, as an approval, and I can, I don't know who I give this to to pass it on. That's a copy of the, uh, recorded, uh, you'll see it up on the other corner. So, no question, it was approved, no one's complaining about that. What, what happened next was that the, um, economy wasn't too good, so the property owner asked for an extension to obtain a building permit, because he already had the special permit approval. And, uh, that was done on January 27th, 2016, and that was approved and recorded on the land records, volume 3944323. So far, so good. Wouldn't need, wouldn't need to come here yet. Then, um, and now it's, we'll jump up to 2019, and, um, in 2019, uh, Jay Hibansky wrote a letter, um, and the Planning and Zoning Commission, um, denied any another extension. And the reasons that they gave, I think were, well, I, I have the reasons, that there was some wetlands, he says onsite, but there's no wetlands onsite, maybe he meant offsite, that you took six years, that's enough time, and failed to submit final plans. Those were the reasons that were given for the denial in 2019. And, um, it's our position that we have an approval, it's a special permit, and the law in Connecticut is pretty clear that a special permit runs with the land, meaning once you record it, it's like when you guys give a variance, you, you record it on the land records, it doesn't matter who the next owner is, they still have the variance that you people issued from the zoning board of appeals. That variance lasts forever. Same thing with the special permit. It's our position that that was recorded, you have your special permit, there should have been no problems. So, I went to court, um, and the judge, and, and told the judge basically what I'm telling you in what we call a mandamus. That just means, um, please allow Mr. Nick Owen to, which he tried to do, try to pull his building permit, and, um, allow him to go get that building permit now. And that's when the judge says, "Whoa, whoa, whoa, you really should come to the ZBA. They, they can give you the relief that you want, uh, so ask them." So I'm asking you. So the, um, uh, I don't, um, see that there's any harm. If you look at, um, the extensions that were given in the past, they were to obtain a building permit. So, um, there was no question that the final plans had already been submitted. What had happened was, they got mixed up in the age-restricted file versus the other file. So, um, Nick Owen will tell you that these files have been shuffled through many times, and it's no one's fault. I'm not pointing the finger at anybody, just, that's just the way the files go sometimes. So the, that, those plans, um, I, I, Nick can, will give to you the, the final plan, so that, I don't think that's a valid reason. Once you, as far as the length of time, you're allowed to get a, um, a building, you know, as I said, as a special permit, it runs with the land, um, and we had always gotten our extensions, um, to get the building permit, so there was no reason to deny it. We were still within the time period to get a building permit. Nick Owen tried to get the building permit, and they just wouldn't give it to him. We were within the extension of time. So, um, I don't think that's an applicable thing. And then the issue with the wetlands, um, there, no one has ever found wetlands on this site. There is a question about, perhaps there's a new wetland, um, on the golf course. No one, it hasn't been decided, but we can always go to the Wetlands Commission and determine whether there is a wetlands or not. I'm not asking you to decide that. So all I really want, uh, or what all that the judge has asked me to ask you, is, um, based on these facts, the fact that we have a special permit, we have, uh, extensions of time to obtain a building permit, um, and then Nick Owen will come up here and testify that he tried to get the permit, but they wouldn't allow him to, within the timeframe, that you should overturn the Planning and Zoning, uh, Commission's, uh, denial. Now you may say to me, "Well, why don't you just go file another one, Steve, you know? Go file another application for 11 units." The problem is that in this town, you've removed that regulation from your zoning regulations. So I can't go back in with a new application and say, "Oh, we just want to build the same thing that we asked the, the Planning and Zoning Commission to approve in 2012, because it's not in your regulations anymore." So I have no, I can't, I can't file a new application, it's just, in your town, it's no longer permitted. It was permitted back then, we didn't do anything wrong, it just, Stratford decided not to, I don't know, allow apartments or condominiums any longer, so, um, that's her choice, I don't have a problem with that. But, uh, so I am kind of at your mercy, um, and if not your mercy, then the court's mercy, but, uh, I, I do agree with the judge that you do have the power to overturn the Planning and Zoning's decision, and I just think that, you know, I don't think anything, I think it was just a mix-up with these final plans, I don't think anyone was being malicious or hiding anything, there's none of that here, okay? It's just an administrative mistake, you know? Um, the, uh, and then the final plans, um, as I said, we did have an extension. In fact, the Planning and Zoning Commission was pretty accommodating. They had a $50,000 bond, and they said, "You know what? We're going to waive that, you know, we'll waive that, you don't need to, to file that bond any longer." So, um, I, I just think that they made a mistake in denying it. They got mixed up with the final plans versus getting a building permit, and, which is fine, um, but I think that you do have the ability to overturn it, and I could have Nick come up and tell you, he's probably a lot more frustrated, so, I don't know, if he'll be calm and... He's been dealing with this since 2012, I haven't been, so, um, but we've tried to do, I think in some, we've tried to do everything, uh, that we were supposed to do, and I believe we did. And we think that we're asking for your help, just to straighten out, uh, something that, I think was, shouldn't have been denied. That's basically it. So I'll call Nick unless you have a question for me. Yes, ma'am.
I have a procedural question.
Yes.
Uh, which I think would be timely before Mr. Owen comes to the microphone.
Sure.
If I may.
Yeah.
And I believe I'm directing this to Attorney Sullivan, uh, speaking on behalf of the town of Stratford. As I understand it, based upon the comments provided to us by the staff, Dan Brennan, there is a question regarding the timeliness, the ripeness of this application before us. So my question to Attorney Sullivan, would it be, in your view, important for this board to not only weigh in on the timeliness, but do you also want us to weigh in on the merits of it? In which case, if you want us to weigh in on the merits of it, we would certainly want to hear Mr. Owen's testimony. If we're limited to the timeliness of it, then I would ask this gentleman to stay at the microphone, so we can debate that point. Is that, is that clear?
Yes, it's clear. I believe there is a question as to the timeliness of the filing of the application. As I see it on the agenda, it is seeking to appeal not the Planning and Zoning Commission's decision, but the decision of the administrators' denial to, for the building permit. So I think it's, um, behooves Attorney Bellis to, um, explain to the board how it is timely, because this has been appealed now, uh, I think this is for the, for the second time, and, um, I, I, I believe it's beyond the time that you would have to appeal the decision of the administrator acting as an enforcement officer of the, of the building permit. And Mr. Bansky is here and can testify as to, as to that as well, if the, if the board so chooses.
So let me try to reframe my question. So let's assume the board members, Attorney Bellis, talk and render some kind of decision on the timeliness. In your view, would it be appropriate for the board also to weigh in on the merits, even if this member doesn't believe it's timely to be in front of us?
I think the procedural issue has to be addressed first, because if this, if it's not, if it's not appropriate for him to be before the board, if the board, then the board doesn't have jurisdiction to hear, um, to hear the substance.
Thank you, I'll let the chairman take back his meeting.
What is the, what is the timeframe that you're referring to?
The timeframe within which the, um, Unique Way Inc. would have to appeal the decision rendered by the, um, by the enforcement officer.
But it was allowed to be put on the agenda. Why was it allowed to be put on the agenda? Why weren't they just told, "You can't, you can't, you cannot bring it forward anymore, the time has lapsed"?
Well, I, I believe the reason that it's on the agenda is that that's a decision for the board to make. So otherwise, you're asking staff to make a decision as to whether something is timely, when really the jurisdiction of the board is up to the board.
So we can assume, we can say that it is timely and let him proceed, is what you're saying?
You could, yes.
Uh, and, I'm sorry if I can be recognized. To that end, Attorney Sullivan, whether it's you, or Mr. Brennan, or Mr. Hibansky, since we're talking about timeliness, I think it would be prudent to recite some of the documentation this board received regarding, when was the appeal filed, what do the statutes allow for timelines, the fact that it was withdrawn, and what day is it on the calendar today? For Attorney Bellis's sake, in case you're not aware, I play the role of a planning administrator in my day job, uh, working through timelines of appeals, of decisions made by zoning officials is something I do, so I'm very familiar with what the requirements are and when something is ripe or not for an appeal. And in my view, uh, this is not timely, but I'm just one vote.
I mean, the, the other, um, I will say that sometimes the way we address these issues is to have Attorney Bellis, he could file a, a memo addressing the timeliness issue, we could then respond to that memo as to why, um, you know, what the, what the position, what the legal position is, um, and, but it would be perfectly appropriate for, for you to go through the timeline and for Attorney Bellis or his client to respond.
I have no problem doing that, by the way, yeah.
Should we just table this for now and allow him to come back with the memo and just keep it open on the agenda and don't do anything tonight? Until we get more legal opinions?
I mean, Mr. Chairman, it's, it's up to the, it's up to the board. We may want to share with Attorney Bellis the information that we do have, so that he can better address, uh, better address the issue. But I, I do think it's two separate things. One, do you have the jurisdiction to hear it? And then you would not move to substance until you make that...
We make that decision.
Correct, but you wouldn't move to the substance until you determined whether you had the, um, the jurisdiction.
So then someone should make a motion to hear it, to start with.
To hear the proced-
Right.
My suggestion is that it.
And then we can go from there.
Correct.
But someone entertain a motion to.
I have a follow.
We'll make a motion first, then we'll, because then we'll question it.
Well, I think we.
We're on the table.
Forgive me for interrupting, but I think we have already read this item to the record and we're faced with a procedural question. That's what's on the table.
That's right. And we have to vote on it to move forward, correct?
Well, we need more information, in my view, before we can move forward. And that's what I was seeking.
I thought we have to list if we want to hear it first and then go from there.
But I.
Can we just let him go ahead without a motion?
Mr. Chairman, I think what you're saying is correct, but also what Commissioner Young is saying is correct, which is we want to give him the procedural information, the timeline that exists, so that we can address the procedural issue.
So we can proceed without any motions, just let him?
So we're just proceeding on the procedural issue and then we'll move to the substance if you get past that.
Okay.
So I return to my former question. I will yield the floor back to you. I'm sorry. Mr. Brennan, are you prepared? Or do we ask Mr. Bansky to remind us all what I believe has been provided to us as far as this timeline? So we can understand this is not a subjective decision made by the board of how much time does anyone get to appeal? This is statutory requirements and it's a matter of doing the math, looking at a calendar and figuring out if that time has passed or not.
Yes. The statutory requirement to appeal a decision of the zoning enforcement officer, or in this case, Jay Habanski's decision, is 30 days after the stop work order had been issued.
Which was.
Which was, I believe it was July 27, 2019.
So if I may, I think, you know, we had some court business in between. And I know we had an application pending, which the applicant chose to withdraw at our July 2021 meeting. That's why, in my view, they don't get a second bite of the apple if they chose to withdraw and the timeline has passed.
Okay, I just want to make sure that I have this straight. Jay Habanski gave a decision and denied. It went to court once and it was denied. It went to court again in March of 2021 and was denied. Is that right?
No, that's not correct. What the court did was it dismissed the complaint and said, go to the, without prejudice, without prejudice, and go to the ZBA.
Gotcha. Thank you.
That's different than what you said. I have no problem. I understand your concern. There was no stop work order here. That's not what happened. It was Nick Owen trying to get a building permit. Okay? So no one was building anything in a stop work order issue. That's why we filed up what we call a mandamus. Mandamus is just a, I guess it's probably a Latin word. That means the court can order, in this case, it would have been Jay Habanski, to allow us to get the building permit. So we chose, we chose that avenue. And the court, in its decision, said, look, I'm going to dismiss this case without prejudice because you never asked the ZBA. So as soon as we got that decision, I have to look, I don't, Ms. Young, I don't know how many days after I got the decision, but we made an application immediately, let's call it, or very shortly thereafter, for the ZBA hearing. And I could put that in a memo. I'm not trying to be tricky. I just don't know the dates off the top of my head.
And just to finish that chronology you're citing, and then do you not agree you withdrew your appeal in July of 2021?
Before your board?
Correct.
Yeah, we withdrew it without prejudice. I don't know if there was enough commissioners. I don't recall the reason. It had nothing to do with the merits.
Thank you for confirming that you chose to withdraw the application. And once again, since there is a finite timeline to appeal a decision of a zoning official, that's why this member believes you are out of time. This is not properly before the board in pursuant to Attorney Sullivan. That is the first and perhaps only question this board needs to render. And to the chairman's point, if you believe you would benefit by providing some memorandum to speak to that point, perhaps the chairman will want to leave this open so that that information be received.
Yeah, I don't mind doing that, as I said.
Do you want to proceed? Does someone want to make a motion to table, leave this open, and then they can come back and give us some time to get some more information? I mean, I get Commissioner Young's point. Flip side of the coin is I don't want to throw the baby out with the bathwater either until we really know. So entertain a motion to table. Mr. Dolan, second. Mr. Ticky?
Second.
All's in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Nay.
Was that a nay?
Yes.
Nay, okay. All right, four to one. Carry. Oh, three to two. Passes three to two. And you'll be back on the agenda for December 7. And then we'll have it straightened out.
Mr. Chairman, could I ask that Attorney Bellis provide that memorandum?
Yes.
Prior to the meeting, like maybe a week or two prior to the meeting, so that I can respond to it and we can have a full discussion?
Yeah, that'd be fine.
I'll give Pat.
Okay.
Okay. All right.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
All right, item two on the agenda. Mr. Ticky, if you would read that into the record, please?
I read into the record, item number two, 150 Hollister Street, petition of, forgive me if I pronounce this wrong, Yanni Mercia, seeking a site plan review in variances of section 4.2 size setback and section 5.1.2 lot area per dwelling unit to construct in addition to create a two-family dwelling in a RM1 zone hardship pre-existing undersized lot makes development. If full accordance with the regulations, extremely difficult for this permitted use.
Good evening. My name is Yanni Mercia. I'm asking for a variance of the building code for 4.2 setback and 5.1.2 lot area per dwelling unit to build a second floor and an attic. That's it. Thank you.
Like yourself, I'm just trying to get my, all this paper in front of me organized. If you can just bear with me for a second, sir. Have you had an opportunity to review the staff, excuse me, the staff comments prepared by Dan Brennan?
Yes, I did.
Dated October 26?
Yes.
Thank you. Mr. Brennan describes, if I, reading this correctly, that you are preparing to remove an existing two-car garage?
Yes.
Yet your parking requirements is only two parking spaces?
Yes.
Can you explain why the necessity to remove the garage?
Yes, ma'am. The condition of the current garage are very bad and it's unstable and it needs to be removed. So I don't have the money to put it back up. So I'm just going to leave it out.
One more question, and thank you for your response. In that same report dated October 26 by Mr. Brennan, he describes, I'm quoting, "It should also be reiterated that even if the property did comply with the minimum lot area, it would still be 2,500 square feet short of the minimum requirement of 10,000 square feet of lot area for two-family dwelling." Can you identify again why you think there is adequate hardship to overcome the fact that you're not providing the minimum lot area?
Well, the way the house is located, one of the reasons, it's in a weird, in a weird area, like towards the right. I did see also that there are also several properties around that house. They have even smaller lots in our two-family dwellings.
So for this one member, I can appreciate and understand better the request for size setback relief due to the unique conditions of the property. I'm struggling more so with the intensification requested to allow for a two-family versus one-family. If I understood you correctly, you have witnessed that there are other two families on smaller lots in your neighborhood. I guess my question, perhaps I'll redirect to Mr. Brennan, do we know any, do we have any information telling us how those other lots came to be the way they are? Are they pre-existing, non-conforming? Did other variances get granted, if you know?
I did look at a few of them. There were, the majority of the houses on that street are two families. And from, I didn't look at all of them, but from the ones I did, there was a mixture of pre-existing, non-conforming. And a few of them did have previous variances.
Thank you both. I have nothing further.
Any other commissioners have any questions?
Excuse me. Chris Stuland, a question. I did drive by the properties and I did not see an existing garage. I saw the driveway. And I'm concerned about the parking as well. I know there's a mixture of homes there and the street is very overcrowded and I'm not in favor of adding more congestion to city streets. And, you know, perhaps the zoning, I would be much for changing the parking requirements for the town, but that's not to be addressed right now. So.
Thank you for your concern. I understand what you're saying. And I have seen it myself that there are a lot of cars on the street. This is another reason why we chose to leave the garage out because that will give us plenty of parking inside and we don't have to worry about parking outside at all.
To that end, as a follow-up question, approximately how many cars on-site versus on the street will you be able to accommodate without the garage on it?
I estimated that if we park diagonally, we can park at least six to eight cars in there with the added space from the garage.
So I will admit that parking is not one of my strengths. When you suggest parking diagonally, do you intend to stripe it to help others like me figure out where to put their cars? You can maximize the usage of the available parking area?
Yes, ma'am. I will stripe it and mark it down each spot.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Questions? Any other commissioners? Hearing none. Anyone here wish to speak in favor of the petition? Anyone wish to speak in favor? Anyone wish to speak in opposition? Anybody wish to speak in opposition? Hearing none, entertain a motion to close the public portion. Commissioner Clary makes a motion. It's a second. Second by Commissioner Young. All's in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Carry. Now, if you're not familiar, we go into administrative after this. You can't speak, but we'll make a decision one way or the others. Yeah, I know that. So if you want to hang, there's one in the back too, I think. If you want to hang on for another 10, 15 minutes, 20 minutes, hour. There's no games on tonight, so you're fine. Oh, does it? Oh, you could go. If you have a birthday party for your little girl, you could go.
Thank you.
I would go. Can I come?
Yes. Thank you so much. I appreciate it.
Commissioner Clary, would you read the third petition into the record, please?
240 Morningside Terrace, petition of Hassan Brooks, seeking a site plan review and variance of section 4.2 for lot coverage and the rear setback requirement from 30 feet to 15.3 feet to construct a one-story addition and an attached garage incidental to a single-family dwelling in a RM3 zone. Hardship.
Good. Sorry, go ahead.
Size and shape of the lot and location of the existing buildings make the location of the proposed addition the only location feasible.
Okay, just state your name, address for the record, please.
Sure. Hassan Brooks, 240 Morningside Terrace.
You have any, you want to speak at all? Or, oh, yeah, yeah. Give us your presentation.
I'm sorry.
You've probably been working on it all day, right?
Of course I have.
In front of the mirror.
Exactly. But I'm going to throw it away and start fresh. First of all, good evening. Thank you for listening to my petition here. I first bought the house as a single male in March of 2020. Got very lucky, I felt. I came in right before the pandemic really hit. That particular dwelling had been sitting on the market for a while, which was unheard of for the past year, right? So came in and got it at a decent price. Otherwise, it would have been a little bit out of my range. I will say to the contractor who flipped it, he did a great job because I walked in and my eyes lit up and it looked shiny and it looked good. But I didn't pay attention to everything else. I wish my realtor had told me at the time the potential issues that I may have if I were to add to the property. And my initial thing that I fell in love with the property is the yard, the outside, the land, the amount of land that I have. It is a three-bedroom, two-bath. If you were to look back over the records, which I didn't do until after I bought it, it looks like that half of the second floor that was put on was just done in 2019 for the sake of making it a three-bedroom, two-bath. But functionally, that third bedroom upstairs, it's not a bedroom. It's an office. The bathroom off of it. Regardless of that, as a single male, met my needs. There were some issues that I realized that I wanted to add to the house. And I immediately started firing some emails to actually the mayor, who was here a little while ago, and was in contact with SCG, trying to, you know, get rid of the oil, switch it over to gas. I have this vision for the top that I want to improve it. And I want it to be exactly to meet all my needs. Well, you know, you never know what's coming down the pike. And fortunately, I rekindled a relationship with my, the mother of my younger son, who, once that was rekindled, I said, I got a house. Come on, let's go. You know, great neighborhood, great school. You know, I have my son in Chapel Elementary. And, you know, it was great until she actually moved in. And then we realized there's not enough closet space. We realized there's not enough storage. I have two vehicles and two motorcycles. And she has a vehicle. And so quickly realized there was an issue there. So I said, you know what? I've always had this idea of adding to the property. Maybe this is a perfect time to do that. In addition to that, you know, especially with them now being with me, I said, you know what? Okay, I've lived in Milford. I've lived in Nogatuck. I've lived in different areas. I want to settle in. You know, I work at Rehab Associates, diagonal here, right on Main Street. Been with the company 20-plus years. Company's been in Stratford for over 30 years, providing therapy. And I said, you know what? A two-minute commute to work? I'm staying. You know, let me do what I have to do. So little did I know, the guidelines, which clearly state that you cannot build within 30 feet of the rear. 30 feet of the rear lot line, I didn't know, I didn't know. And with that being said, the way the property is, the layout is currently, that would only give me roughly 10 feet to go back, to stay within those guidelines. And I believe you have pictures of the layout of the house currently. Even I was amazed when I saw it on paper. I mean, I obviously live in it, so I know it, I feel it, but I did just a little bit of the math, the living room's 144 square feet. 144. The dining room is 152. The kitchen is 110. You add all three, you got 406 for three people. My mother does live in Bridgeport, she likes to come over. My girlfriend does have parents in Danbury, they love to come, you know, this is the house that they want to come do stuff and we're on top of each other within two minutes. We don't have that ability. So I said, let me go ahead and, you know, consider this project. So again, respectfully, I didn't know about the guidelines, you know, I hope that this, the panel will find that, you know, that there is a little room to grant a variance here. Also, within the time of being at this property, I believe in my neighborhood. I really fell in love with the neighborhood. I have signed letters from four out of, excuse me, two out of the four neighbors that abud my property. I do have an email where I did speak verbally, I spoke verbally to the other two individuals. The one young lady, and I say that respectfully, at probably 90-plus years old, just kind of smiled at me and said, would you like to do, that's fine. And then you tell she didn't, you know, want to write a letter, which is fine. And then the other property behind me, which I don't know if you guys are aware, but this particular property at 435 Cutspring, is a huge property and the particular owner, I believe is renting it, and so there's tenants there who don't necessarily buy into the neighborhood philosophy of keep your yard neat and clean. It's okay, everyone has their rights. But that is the one property that I said, you know what, eventually, I mean, I won't need a variance for it, but I will be putting a fence, I will be doing everything to help improve the quality of my property. So I have spoken, gotten verbal okays, I have gotten written okays from my neighbors, even other neighbors across the street. There's been two brand-new houses built within the year that I've been there. Come to find out, the third house above was built a year prior. Those houses to me, on the end of Morningside Terrace, they really set the tone for that street. When you turn up Morningside Terrace, you see these big houses. And then also the one on the corner at 280 is not new, but still has a nice little size to it. And I said, you know, already have been in those houses as my neighbors and become friendly with them. I see what the possibility is, and I said to myself, I have this land, let me try to do that, not, I'm not trying to keep up with the Joneses, but I'm trying to do what I have to do for my family. And the fact that I would like to not have to, excuse me, I would like to not have to buy another house, you know? If it can't meet my needs and I can't do what I need to do, at one point, it will be too small. So I hope that you, your panel is willing to listen to my concerns and consider allowing me to do this. It would be greatly appreciated.
Thank you. Commissioners, questions? Commissioner Young?
Good evening, sir.
Good evening.
Your story is very compelling and speaks to me as someone who monopolizes all the closet space at my house, so I get it.
Sure.
As perhaps you saw in the staff report prepared by Dan Brennan dated October 26, we're charged with looking at what is the unique hardship related to the property, not the people.
Right.
Who own the property or live inside the building on the property.
Correct.
You identify size and shape of the lot to be what you perceive is the hardship, and I didn't hear in your soliloquy discussion about the size and shape of the lot. Mr. Brennan talks about currently the setbacks comply. I don't believe Mr. Brennan tells us whether or not your lot shape complies, and if you're not sure, we can ask Mr. Brennan to expand on that point, but I'd like to give you that opportunity to speak to it first. Thank you.
Sure. In regards to the lot comply, and I apologize, I don't know what that means as far as what does the lot comply to itself in its physical form, but I'll, I do know that the rear yard, as I said, is from the back of the house to the rear line is 40 feet and the length of my property is roughly 125 feet. So it's wider than it is deeper, so that poses the issue. And with that amount of land, you know, to not be able to, well, excuse me, with that amount of land, I wanted to be able to utilize some of it. Even with the proposed addition, it's not going to consume that whole lot by any means. I enjoy a yard, I enjoy, it's gonna sound silly, cutting grass, I enjoy doing all those things. You know, the front of my yard, front of the house property, you know, is well-kept, the back is a little beat up right now, but I'm working on that. So I'm not sure if I answered your question, all I know is regards to what the rear lot size is.
I think you did in part, but I'll ask Mr. Brennan.
Sure.
If he could. Can you, and forgive me if it's already in your report, but for the record, identify what are the size and shape requirements in the zone and how does the existing conditions relate to those requirements?
Yeah, so the zone falls into a RS3 zone. The lot meets all of the requirements except for, and this isn't directly at the lot, but the house itself, is short on the front setback. Front setback is required 25 feet where the existing is 21.6. That's the only non-conformity of the property that came up.
Mary Young again. So if size and shape is the hardship being offered, but you're telling us that size and shape currently complies, is that accurate?
Yes, that is correct.
Do you want to supplement your testimony now that you've been given that information about what is unique about the property that would allow us to grant your application?
I think my best response to that is I don't, there's not another way that I could say it, I might not be meeting the needs that you're asking for, that I'm aware of as far as the uniqueness for what counts as a true hardship. I mean, Mr. Brennan has been very nice with fielding my questions prior to coming here and trying to get a better understanding. I can only tell you what I know factually about from the backyard to the rear line and the difficulty with staying within that rear setback guideline with adding, you know, the extra space to lengthen my house, to have a true living room, to have a true bedroom with closet space for two people, not one. And for the sake of a garage, you know, I want to be able to get out of the car and just walk in the house. So, again, I don't know if that answers your question.
So, thank you for trying. In the spirit of helping you help yourself and helping us help ourselves.
Sure.
In a perfect world, we try to offer recitation of hardships that will defend our decisions if they're ever challenged.
Sure, right.
And so.
He did mention that.
Size and shape of the lot was what you had offered. Mr. Brennan didn't perceive that that would be enough based upon his report, making me want to extract something more from you that could allow to get you over the finish line if the board were so inclined. I heard you talk about a garage is needed, so perhaps from a public safety standpoint, not to put words in your mouth, but perhaps that is something that's lacking now that in inclement weather in New England, having a garage where one can safely access their vehicles might be something you might have thought of to add?
Absolutely, and I apologize, I forgot that. That's exactly part of it as well, safety. I wouldn't want anyone to slip or fall or get hurt. In addition to the public safety aspect, I talk about the neighborhood, right, really kind of being part of the neighborhood. And definitely a large percent of the homes, definitely within that nook of Morningside Terrace, everybody's car is in the garage. The presentation of the neighborhood and, you know, you don't want anything out in the street, you know, our street is nice and clear and likes to be clean and allow people to walk up and down the sidewalk and, you know, walk their dogs and do everything. So in the essence of public safety, not having a car in the way or safety within the home itself, if my mother comes, if her elderly parents come, knowing that they're coming, give them room to pull in there and then just walk in the house. That would be a great opportunity if allowed.
And forgive me, one more question.
Sure.
If you saw us passing paper and whispering to each other, we were reviewing the letters that you referenced from your neighbors in support of this application.
Yes.
But there's only one of each, so we were passing it along. As I'm looking at a map of the property, the neighbor closest to the proposed work or the neighbors closest to the proposed work are letters of support from them in the collection that was passed around, which is not in front of me anymore.
Are you asking me, are there letters from them?
From those particular people?
There are from two of them, from, if you're facing my property, from the left and the right. The rear to the right, the one at 435 Cutspring, that, as I said, is the house that has tenants, but I did speak to that, speak to the owner and sent her an email because she did want to see what the plans potentially would look like. And so I did explain to her what was happening and have proof of that email, it's not a letter. But the only property that I do not have a letter from is from 41 Morningside Drive, and that's the elderly lady to the back to the left. I don't have a letter, I do have a verbal.
Thank you for all your reaching out.
Sure, no problem.
No other questions, thank you.
Any other questions from the commissioners? Hearing none, is there anyone here that wishes to speak in favor of the petition? Anyone wish to speak in favor? Anyone wish to speak in opposition? Anyone wish to speak in opposition? Hearing none, entertain a motion to close the public portion. My Commissioner Young, seconded by Commissioner Tiki, all's in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, carried unanimously. All right, finally, Broadridge Avenue. Commissioner Doolin?
I'm sorry to interrupt.
No, go ahead.
What happens next?
If you sit here for about 15 minutes, we'll probably act on it.
Okay, thank you.
Christine Doolin, 2037 Broadridge Avenue, petition of Carrie L. Widom seeking a site plan review and variance of section 4.2 to expand the maximum building coverage from the existing 26.9% to 27.1% and front yard setback from 13.3 feet to 7.3 feet to construct new front steps and a landing incidental to a single-family dwelling in an RS4 zone. Hardship, pre-existing, non-conforming, undersized lot, current stairs are unsafe and do not meet today's minimum building code.
Thank you, okay.
My name is Doug McMillan, I'm the architect for the project. The letter pretty much covered it. We'd like to rebuild the front steps that go up to the house. The current steps are in bad shape and they exist. There is no landing, we'd like to make them conform to the current building code, that you have a three-foot landing and then the steps down. The way it is now, there's just steps right up to the door. As with any front door, the storm door opens out, so you have to back up off the steps, which is very tedious, and open the storm door to get into the house. So we'd like to create a three-foot landing and then the two treads, three risers down in the same location that they are. We looked at if we turn the steps to the right, then you're entering right into the driveway. When you come out the front door, you'd be walking right into the driveway that goes back to the garage, which would be a very unsafe situation. If you turn them to the left, we then have to add more driveway or walkway, more impervious area because we would land on the lawn. And also, we have, we took a picture today of it, this is the current steps here, we just really want to come out with a landing and step down. If we go this direction, we go past onto the grass and we have to make some type of pavement area to get around to it. And our water line and gas line come in about two and a half feet off that corner, so we'd actually be building over the top of those, which we prefer not to do. We do have hardship in that the current situation, we are on a very undersized lot, we're in a 7,500-square-foot zone, we have 5,000 square feet, so our lot is small and difficult to conform to setbacks. We're also not asking to expand the building, we're just expanding, we're just redoing the steps. We're not increasing living area, we're not increasing anything to do with that kind of thing, it's just to do the steps in a safe manner. And because the porch and the front of the house all is pre-existing and the position of the house, it shifted a little forward, we need a variance for the front yard setback and for coverage.
Thank you. Questions from commissioners? Once more time, questions from commissioners?
No, I don't have a question, I just drove by, it looks very nice what you're doing.
Anyone here wish to speak in opposition to the petition? Anyone wish to speak in opposition? Anyone wish to speak in favor? Anyone wish to speak in favor? Entertain a motion to close the public portion. Ms. Young, is there a second? Second, Mr. Doolin, all's in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Carried unanimously.
Thank you.
It was a public hearing. Motion to close public hearing? Trying to get your name out of minutes before it's your last meeting? Motion by Commissioner Young, seconded by Commissioner Clary, all's in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Carried. All right, now we go to the administrative session. And the first two items, I guess we just don't do anything with them. Nope, those are just sitting there. So the next item would be your pleasure on Hollister Street. Take, motion by, you are gonna be making the name, you're making a name for yourself tonight. Motion by Commissioner Young, seconded by Commissioner Tiki, all's in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? What is your pleasure, discussion, motion? I'll make a motion to approve to get the discussion started. Is there a second? Second by Commissioner Young, discussion.
I'm aware that there were some concerns, I shared them initially, concerning parking, but found the testimony persuasive that with the striping as proposed for allowing six to eight parking, six to eight parking spaces available to serve a demand of two according to the zoning regulations, I think that will mitigate the parking concerns. And I don't know if it's on the plan, I don't recall, but perhaps the chairman would be willing to entertain a modified motion that required the striping as offered by the applicant to define those parking spaces to ensure that mitigation is available.
I'll accept the motion, the amendment to the motion.
That's all, thank you.
Anyone else?
We're agreeing now. I just, about the parking, who ensures that they get the six to eight diagonal spots or what, you do? Okay. Thank you.
And I'm sure the chairman will offer the hardship that he's citing for granting the variance in his motion? Yep.
Pre-existing undersized lot makes development full accordance with the regulations extremely difficult for the permitted use, so he's asking for a variance for that. I'll do a roll call. Commissioner Doolin, I'm gonna bounce around, see if you're paying attention. Commissioner Tiki?
Yes.
Commissioner Streets?
Yes.
Commissioner Young?
Yes.
Commissioner Doolin?
We're doing Hollister Street, right?
Yes. Is that a yes?
Yes.
Commissioner Clary?
Yes.
Motion passes, the petition passes unanimously. Your pleasure on Morningside Terrace. I'll make a motion to approve, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Tiki, discussion?
Do we have to take it off the table first?
Go ahead.
Um.
No.
Vote by Commissioner Young, is there a second?
All's in favor, signify by saying aye. Motion to approve. Mr. Tiki, all's in favor? Discussion.
I think we heard testimony tonight that was substituting a new hardship argument for the one that was originally offered. And for those making motions, I think you should cite that hardship argument. And that's all I have.
Hardship is the size and shape of the lot and location of the existing building makes the location of the proposed addition the only location feasible for this.
So, that is what? Sorry. So, that is what was offered initially. But you recall, the testimony was, in lieu of that, since Dan Brennan just informed us size and shape doesn't really affect this lot, public safety seemed to be what he was substituting as his hardship and conceivably might be what you would want to substitute for your rationale for granting a variance.
All of that. Got that for the minutes? And I'll agree with you. Any other discussion on a motion? Hearing none. Mr. Tiki?
Yes.
Ms. Young?
Yes.
Mrs. Streets?
Yes.
Ms. Doolin?
Yes.
Mrs. Clary?
Yes.
Petition passes unanimously. Take it off the table. Motion, take it off the table. Seconded by Ms. Young. Discussion. All's in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
What is your pleasure? I am not making this motion.
Mr. Chair, I make a motion to accept.
Motion by Mr. Tiki to accept. Seconded by Commissioner Young, who's getting her name on every single motion tonight. All's in favor, signify by saying aye. Discussion.
I'd like to add to my motion to accept with the hardship as presented, pre-existing, nonconforming, undersized lot. Current stairs are unsafe and do not meet today's minimum building code.
Thank you. Any further, any discussion? Hearing none. Commissioner Clary? Yes or no? You're voting no? We're voting on the petition to whether to approve it or not.
Yes.
Commissioner Doolin? And Mr. Commissioner Tiki?
Yes.
Commissioner Streets? Commissioner Young?
Yes.
Chair votes yes. Petition is granted. All right, approval of minutes for October 5th, 2021.
I'm sorry, before we go further, did six of us vote on certain things and not only five votes allowed? Mr. Brennan?
That's it.
Mr. Brennan, do you want to confirm yes or no on the procedural question?
Five votes are the max.
Thank you. And I guess the chairman's yielding his votes so that we don't have six.
Excellent. Thank you.
Now, let's go to approval of minutes for October 5th.
Motion to approve?
Is there a second? Seconded by Commissioner Clary. All, discussion on it? All's in favor, signify by saying aye. I'm not voting? Okay. CAM Site Plan Review, anything? Nothing, okay. And the Rose and Sediment Control Approval, we don't do anything with that because it's still on the table. Members' concerns and comments. And we do have masks on, so we don't have to listen to that. Commissioner Young?
So, a lot of people were in hard-fought elections yesterday. And I just wanted to offer my respectful congratulations on the record to our chairman.
Thank you.
Who won his race to be on the zoning board. He's only two years into his term. I can't imagine why he'd want to leave this wonderful board. To each his own. But I.
You know what? That's true, because you're leaving. I should have stayed.
But I, I do hope those who fill your shoes follow in your model where I don't believe party politics plays a role here. I think we all try to do our best to look at the arguments in front of us and make informed decisions. And I thank you for your efforts in that regard.
I thank you too, because your insight has been a big help for all of us. Just, you can't put this in a minute. It's annoying at times, but it's been an insight. Okay, the, anybody else have any concerns? Discussion and vote on the 2022 meeting. Do we have to do, we can't wait for the new? We have to do that, right? Okay. Any discussion? Any, like, make a motion?
Motion to accept.
Motion to accept. Is there a second? Seconded by Commissioner Young. All's in favor? Any discussion on the calendar? All's in favor, signify by saying aye. Opposed? Entertain a motion to adjourn. Commissioner Young? Seconded by Commissioner Tiki. All's in favor, signify by saying aye. Opposed? Thank you. We only have one more meeting. You realize the only person that's staying is Gavin?